Good morning and welcome to the Augsburg City Council 2024 inaugural ceremony. Our invocation will be presented by Father Chris Carrera, Augsburg Police Department Chaplain.
Good morning. I'd like the ushers to take up a collection now, please. Oh, no, sorry. Before the prayer, I just want to say how honored I am to be with you all here today. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather to mark the formal beginning of the service of these new, this new mayor and councillors here in the city of Augsburg, we give you thanks and praise. We thank you for the service of those who have come before, on whose shoulders these new councillor members will stand. We thank you for the generosity of our new leaders, Mayor Mike Thule, Councillor R Storm Silley, Councillor Jennifer Stevenson, Councillor Donna Trim, and Councillor Michael Weaver. In a world that often focuses on self-serving, these individuals have generously committed to serving the common good of all. May this ceremony mark a new beginning and a future of hope and prosperity for the city of Augsburg. May all here present be reminded that it is more noble to serve than to be served. And may you, Lord, bless the work of these and all public servants. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Father Carrera. Please stand and join us as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the regardless of which stands on the issue of our behalf, even as well of the peace of the
We will begin our swearing-in ceremony with Mayor Michael Thule and his family is certainly welcome to join him. Have you raised your right hand, sir, and repeat after me? I, Michael Thule,
I, Michael Thule,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
of mayor
of mayor
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Well, good morning. I am Michael Thule. I'm a citizen of Augsburg and I appreciate the opportunity to address you today as mayor. And I only hope Kathy Jackson's alarm doesn't go off at the five-minute mark with the dozen city council meetings because my cabinets will run a bit longer than that today. But I'm pleased to see so many of you here as we usher in new government in Augsburg. I'm especially pleased that my wife Sue, my daughter Shannon, her husband Tyler, my daughter Erin, her wife Alicia, are able to be part of the ceremony today. They are my biggest supporters. Most of you do not know this, but while this is the first time I've been sworn in as mayor, it's the second time I've served as mayor. I know this is a difficult picture for you to see, and I think it's being broadcast remotely in a picture back there on the way out. But this is a picture of me back on May 1st, 1975, when as part of the Else Club Youth Day, I was mayor for the day. So I'm pictured there with Mayor Jack Phillips. And I'll tell you, I mean, I did not plan or dream since that time till probably his last step about becoming mayor that I would be mayor of the city. But anyway. And then the city council at times will consider options on issues brought before us. A concerned citizen, recognizing that as my first time as mayor, my struggle in choosing among the options available on a particular issue, recently gave me a tool to help me make decisions. Beginning next week, I look forward to joining other members of this new city council as we begin our work on behalf of the citizens of Augsburg. As I said during the campaign and on election night, my major goal in the next year will be the conduct of city business in a courteous, respectful manner. Courtesy in the way we treat each other and address each other as councillors when we discuss and debate options presented to resolve a particular issue. Courtesy in the way we treat members of our community who speak to us during meetings, who speak to us when out in public, who exchange comments about city affairs and social media. Respecting the way we treat the many fine city employees who provide the valuable services we ask of city government. Respecting the way we participate in dialogue with other government agencies or in dialogue with other groups and entities associated with the city. We may not always agree with each other as we explore ways to make our lives better in the city, but these disagreements do not need to become personal. So again, my top goal, let's just be nice to one another. I look forward to introducing to the new city council our federal, state, and county elected officials and their respective support staffs. They play a vital role in partnering with the city in providing us resources and services that benefit our city. St. Lawrence County is an important partner with the city in certain service areas, and we look forward to continuing dialogue as we seek collaboration when it meets our mutual interests. St. Lawrence County was certainly a friend to the city when during the transition to home rule and the collection of New York State sales tax, it extended the prior agreement to assure the city did not go months without this important revenue. And most recently, through the efforts of St. Lawrence County District Attorney Gary Pasqua, the county issued a grant to the city intended to hire an additional police officer that is desperately needed. We are grateful for the support from St. Lawrence County. Returning to city employees, our police, our firefighters, those of you in DPW, our department heads, administrative support staff, and those we contract with fiscal services, I say thank you and I applaud you. Keep up the splendid work you do for us and your respective peers. The city has many service clubs whose members volunteer their time and talents to support various civic activities. Thank you for all you do for us. I believe the COVID pandemic caused several city boards and commissions to become inactive or have limited activity over the past two to three years. I am hopeful these valuable bodies will be active in 2024. And one request I make of city administration is to schedule presentations by these boards to city council this year so we can learn more about their role in city government. The youth of our community are very well served by the Augsburg City School District. We should look to explore ways we might be able to partner with the school district to create efficiencies in our services. Our youth, as well as adults, benefit from the resources and programming offered by the Augsburg Public Library. As the municipal public library, chartered under New York State Education Law, the city may provide direct or indirect financial support to the library. While the city is at this time not able to provide direct dollar support to the library, we might explore ideas to help in other ways. I recently attended a presentation from Rick Duval, CEO and President of Clifton Hepburn Medical Center, in which he outlined changes the hospital is making to become a critical access hospital. If successful, increases in reimbursement rates will help stabilize hospital finances while incurring no loss of current services. If goals are achieved, the city of Augsburg will continue to have a hospital, something very important to our future. And then when I look ahead to the future of the city of Augsburg, two words come to mind: opportunity and hope. There is opportunity for developers as various properties in the city become available, then these properties along our beautiful St. Lawrence River. Significant upgrade to the city's infrastructure positions us for growth. The former Diamond National Shade Roller Properties, the former Augsburg Tank Farm Property, the land at the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center will be available once the state raises the old buildings they had identified. We need to provide the city resources to market these investment opportunities for development, and I am hopeful over time these properties will be restored to the city's tax rule. I am hopeful that Augsburg will see an increase in tourism to reward the efforts of so many people in our community. Opportunity for an increase in the numbers visiting and spending time in our city exists with the significant $18 million grant from New York State to the Augsburg Regional Port Authority that will transform the Augsburg International Airport into a regional transportation hub. It is welcome news to see the investment in airport expansion by the OBPA these past few years rewarded. And then more on the OBPA, the city will also benefit from the expansion of the Port of Augsburg and from the proposed construction of a daycare facility in its industrial park. I look forward to learning more about the OBPA and its newer projects in the future presentation before the city council. Returning to tourism, some of the tourism opportunities offered in the city include: One, on June 1st, 2024, will mark the 207th anniversary of the Feast of the Presentation of the Blessed Virgin in the Temple of the Fourth of La Presentación, in effect, the 2075th anniversary of the city of Augsburg. As it is able, I believe the city should support activities of the Fourth of La Presentación Association as it continues its efforts to rebuild the fort. I encourage the community and our neighbors to witness the fourth event in 2024. We have the Frederick Remington Art Museum, its many programs and activities. We have the Augsburg Seaway Festival, whose volunteers not only have been tourists to the city's Seaway Festival Week, but also its fundraising events throughout the year. We have the continuing growth of the River District with exciting proposals for new activity in this area. We have the continued growth of the Augsburg History Museum. We have Augsburg Command performances and the great shows they bring to Augsburg. And then our greatest natural resource, the St. Lawrence River, draws business from around the world. We need to bring back focused activity, such as a fishing derby, coordinating activity with our neighbors along the river in St. Lawrence County, namely Lottie Tunsus. And then Augsburg will experience a unique tourism opportunity this April 8th, where we will be on the direct path of a solar eclipse. Totality in the eclipse will occur around 3:20 that afternoon. If we promote Augsburg as a destination to witness this once-in-a-lifetime solar eclipse totality, then we can see a significant number of visitors that day and perhaps days surrounding the event. The St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce website has an outstanding tab with information about this event and ideas and marketing our area to tourists. Laura Pearson, Executive Director of the Greater Augsburg Chamber of Commerce, has been sharing ideas for multiple solar eclipses with local businesses. On behalf of the city, next week, when I write letters of introduction to introduce me and our new city council to our elected officials, I will include an invitation for them to join us on April 8th. This will be a great opportunity to showcase Augsburg, and we need to take advantage of it. In conclusion, as my comments today demonstrate, I am hopeful for the future of Augsburg, but we need the help of many. We need help from our federal, state, and county governments. We need help from developers. We need help from our local employee unions. We need help from all of you, our citizens. I encourage you to stay informed about city issues and proposed actions of the city government so you can make informed opinions that I encourage you to share with the city council. I think citizens in Augsburg wanted to see a change in government in 2024. Well, you elected the five of us to affect changes, but that doesn't mean your job as citizens is done. To steal a partial line from President Kennedy in his inauguration in 1960, ask what you can do for our city. Together, we can achieve good things for our city. Next week, let's get started. Thank you.
Next, we have Councillor R Storm Silley. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me, sir? I, R Storm Silley,
I, R Storm Silley,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
The Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
That I will faithfully discharge
the duties of city councillor
The duties of city councillor
according to the best of my ability.
I've got a couple notes here, nothing quite as long as mics. And if you have seen my performances for 21 years at the athletic banquet, my speaking abilities aren't necessarily the best. I want to start with thanking the citizens of Augsburg for electing me and our fellow councillors and their faith in us to do the job. About three and a half years ago, my friend Blair Rothel started pushing me to run for mayor. And he never let up. I wish he could be here today. In addition to thanking those who voted for me, I want to thank my wife Kim, who supported the run, supported the entire thing. What I do want to say is please don't expect a January 1st miracle. We are taking over government within the unfilled vital positions and employees in our city. It's going to take us a while to get back on track. We're working on it. With your support and the support of our dedicated employees, we will get there. But it's going to take a while to return to normal operations. Again, thank you.
Next, we have Councillor Jennifer Stevenson. Have you raised your right hand?
Yeah.
Sorry. I, Jennifer Stevenson,
I, Jennifer Stevenson,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of city councillor
the duties of city councillor
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
I am very humbled to be here again. I will tell you, I served on council previously, but I have learned so much since then. The last four years have been wonderful. They've been wonderful because I've seen our city come together. I've seen people step up. I've seen a small group of citizens affect change. Margaret Mead said it best when she said, "Indeed, the only thing that can affect change is a small group of citizens." I paraphrase that a little bit, but you understand the meaning of that because so many people have stepped up, have encouraged, have helped, and are willing to continue to serve and to help us all. I travel extensively through the National Association of Rail Tours. I'm very blessed to have a position that I represent three states, and I think three of the best states in the Union: New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania. I always joke and say that I'm the perfect region two person: born in New Jersey, raised in New York, and a Philadelphia Phillies fan. That teaches me a lot of humility. But I believe that when I travel, I brag about Augsburg all the time. I'm educating people about Augsburg. They always say, "What doesn't Augsburg have? What didn't it do? What didn't it start?" And I'm like, "Well, come and see and check it out." Because that's why I've always chosen to call this my home and why the precious time that I have, my family and myself, we dedicate it to the city by serving on various boards, serving at council before, and coming back to council. I've sat with people, the head of the Walton Family Foundation, and tried to pitch the fort and our economic development along the waterfront. I've had those opportunities. I informed our national economist for NAR, who's a great pal of mine, that when he always says Louisiana Purchase was one of the best real estate deals in the world, I always say, "Yes, and do you know who was responsible for putting that funding together? Mr. Ogden." So I'm always remembering us, and I'm always telling people what we have available here, what the citizens here do, what the people here welcome and they encourage and they want growth. They want to see the city flourish again. So let's not look in the rearview mirror. Let's look in the windshield and let's continue to go forward. Let's continue to promote our city. And as our new mayor said, let's make sure that we all continue to have the dedication that we do and the love for the city and show it. So I look forward to serving with my fellow councillors, the councillors that are still sitting, and our new mayor, and also to hear from all of you. As you know, I am always available to you. If you have any concerns, any ideas, or just want to chat, please always reach out. Thank you so very much.
And next, we have Councillor Donna Trim.
Supposed to be on my back. He's pretty capable. Why does he have to put a motor on?
Wherever he wants to be, wherever you're comfortable, Mr. Trim. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Donna Trim,
I, Donna Trim,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge
the duties of city councillor
the duties of city councillor
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
So I was born and raised in Augsburg and was moved to Lisbon at age 11, kind of kicking and screaming. And about a year and a half after that move, I pulled a civil disobedience and got my way back to OFA. So I have grown up in this city. I grew up in a town where, when I went away to Buffalo for undergrad, and then I went to New York City for graduate school, when I would tell stories of my childhood here, people would say, "It just sounds so idyllic, that town." And it was idyllic. And as I have been back home for a number of years now from all my travels, I have watched the last four years with just real sadness. And so, and most of you probably know, if you've read my campaign stuff, I'm a social worker, so I have gone about looking to do good, change systems. I'm a psychotherapist at the Wellness Center in Clifton Hepburn. So I help people change their own lives, change systems, and I'm so, so excited to be part of this new era, to return Augsburg to what I knew growing up and even more than that. So thanks for your faith in me. I promise I will do my best.
And now we have Councillor Michael Weaver. Have you raised your right hand and repeat after me? I, Michael Weaver,
I, Michael Weaver,
do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support
That I will support
the Constitution of the United States
Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
the duties of city councillor
the duties of city councillor
according to the best of my ability.
according to the best of my ability.
I want to first thank mayor, our council. I'm humbled to serve. I'm glad that I was elected. And I know we got a lot of stuff forward that we got to take care of, and we will. I think with this council, we got a good start, and we're going to have a good start and a good beginning. So I'm not much for words, as you can hear, but I'll try to do my best, and that's all I can do.
Father Carrera will now present our benediction.
Let us pray. Lord, the important work both now continues and begins. Blessed with your divine wisdom and fortitude, these new public leaders and all who serve the citizens of Augsburg, bless this city with a new tone of cooperation and unparalleled prosperity. The challenges are real, but when public servants come together to do your will, all things are possible. With the psalmist of sacred scripture, I say, prosper the work of our hands. Prosper the work of our hands. Amen.
Thank you, Father Carrera. And lastly, our interim city manager, Andrew Smith, will offer some closing remarks.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you all for joining us today. And we'll be very brief. Welcome to the new members of council on behalf of all city staff and the management team. We look forward to working with you in 2024 and moving the city forward. And I welcome all of you to join us for refreshments at the rear of the chamber. Happy New Year.